Our next item, our final item for the day is 6.6, 3:30 PM. Consideration of presentation and discussion of a draft public defender service program and implementation plan. And we've got CIO Parker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, we have Jose Barala, our consultant with regard to establishing a public defender program, and Carlos Torres with the county council's office to present to you today an overview of how to proceed forward.
Good afternoon. I don't know if I should wait for the PowerPoint to come up or I can begin my introduction.
Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, I thank you very much, Madam Chair, and members of the board, and Susan, and Carlos, for the gracious introduction. I came to Lake County to be able to see what was going on here. And I've been incredibly surprised and pleased with the kind of gracious reception I received, both from the LID attorneys and from the meetings that we've had with other stakeholders here this week. I want to preface by saying that my goal was to actually see a fact-finding, be involved in fact-finding here locally, to see how the plan that I had proposed in a working draft to the CIO, how it could come to fruition. And in the week that I've been here, I've attended numerous court sessions. Obviously, the LID lawyers have much more experience in terms of the court sessions, but I went to many calendars, was able to spend a few lunch hours with the LID attorneys and see their dedication and their concern for their clients and their presentation. We did have, we started our week by actually having a meeting that included chiefs of police. It included the Clear Lake Chief of Police, the Lakeport Chief of Police, the sheriff, the district attorney, Susan Cronus, and the members of LID, and members from the CIO's office, and a person who was the interim behavioral chief, and along with Carlos. And we actually spoke about the plan that I'm about to be presenting to you, to just get their feedback, to see, you know, was this something that they would, you know, kind of know about and understand? All too often, when these kind of transitions are made, a key stakeholder is left out of the picture. And all of a sudden, the plan's put into place, and people say, "Why didn't anybody tell us about it?" And my goal in this week was to actually bring in as many people into the conversation of what this is going to look like, so that they can know that there's going to be an open communication as this process goes through. The second meeting we had, we met with two of the judges, Judge Markham and Judge Bloom, with regard to court concerns, and letting them know what was going on. Again, along with their court executive officer, we were able to bring them in, again, so that they were very much on, in the loop at the very start, so that there wouldn't be surprises as things go through the process. And then, we were able to meet with stakeholders, like a member of the IST team. What does that look like to create the technology to support an office like this? Things of that nature were going on. And so, I want to, first of all, thank everybody who participated in these sessions. All the chiefs of police, all the people that I mentioned before, they were gracious and engaged, and it was wonderful to get that participation going. And the main thing that I wanted to get across to people, as we talked about this implementation, is the fact that it's going to change things. There's just no getting around, it's going to change things. A statutory public defender office is focused on the county in which it is created. It belongs to Lake County, and the attorneys working for that office are committed to working for the betterment of the clients and the community in Lake County. And one of the things that I was hoping to sort of get was a buy-in from some of the stakeholders. And I can tell you that one of the judges said, "If you're coming here to sell us, you don't have to sell us. We really, we're behind a statutory office." And the main reason is they want to be able to have attorneys who are focused on Lake County and are available to them, to be able to get things done, as they say. As one judge said, "I just want somebody in front of me. I want to be able to do that." I will tell you that I saw, in the court, as I was there, a lot of attorneys doing a lot of hard work. The one thing that I did notice, and I was, you know, clear to everybody, is I think that a statutory office will create an organization plan, and accountability and responsibility plan, that's very clear as to who you go to when somebody is not there, or things are going on with regard to that. And I spoke to the chiefs about the kinds of innovation that's going on in different parts of the state, that are just things that could be considered when you have a statutory office, and some, and an office that is part of the stakeholder table, where all these issues that sort of cross-pollinate with each other are going to be discussed and solved, right? One of the things that, you know, I talked to the chiefs about is that, you know, there's innovative projects that are going on now, that when a person gets a citation, that citation is then scanned and sent to the public defender's office, so that the public defender can actually call the person and get the information and say, "Look, it's really important to show up." Because if you fail to appear, you could be arrested, all these other consequences to come in. And they've seen in Contra Costa County and other places, a reduction in failures to appear because of that system, right? In other words, it's a warm hand handing off to another warm hand, creating the opportunity to be heard by somebody who now has an advocate, instead of showing up to court, saying, "I'm going to show up there by myself. What's going to go on?" Right? And so, it's processes like that that are going on, that have to be done, oftentimes can only be done when there's a statutory office that can then see the follow-through of some of these initiatives. So, what is the, 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 the goal of creating a statutory public defender office? If you can go to the second slide? It's basically to enhance your community. It's to bring to your community community-oriented defense and holistic representation, to be able to focus on the underlying causes of crime, and working together with equally committed stakeholders to achieve the ends of the kind of mental health and substance abuse outcomes that we want to see, to stop that cycle as much as we can. And really creating the, 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 the sort of seamless integration between a person coming into court and meeting with their attorney, getting the motivational support from their attorney and from others on the public defender staff, to continue to complete some of these programs and other things, whose outcomes, if completed, really have a tremendous impact on the quality of the community. So, when we talk about a public defender office, I want you to know what I'm bringing to you is not just a statutory government code office. What I'm hoping that this community can create is a community-oriented public defender office that has attorneys who understand the importance of making their clients better, more whole, and productive citizens of this county. So, what does this working plan look like? I have given a working plan to, a draft of a working plan to the CIO's office and to county council, and I believe they shared it with other people. I don't know if they've given you the rollout of the plan, but basically, it's a pretty standard blueprint. You know, you first get the support of the institutional entities, the board of supervisors, the police chiefs, the other stakeholders, and you start the process of introducing that. And I think that that's what I tried very hard to do this week, as I was making the site visit. And so, in that first plan, this plan is like all plans. It's simply a plan that's going to be more detailed as it goes through implementation. It's going to call for certain things to happen, milestones to happen, in order for other things to continue in the path. The first and foremost is the, is creating a position and funding a position, and then appointing a chief public defender. The person who's going to be the leader, who will have the, he or she will have the vision that will be carried out through this process, and a vision that will be part of hiring, be part of outreach, be part of all the things that are necessary. So, in some ways, you're looking not just for somebody who's going to check boxes, but you're looking for somebody who has a vision and can talk about strategic plans, can talk about saying, "What does a three-year strategic plan look like? What is a five-year strategic plan? What would we like to see in 10 years?" So that there's an internal movement and accomplishment that this office can look to achieve, to ensure that the commitment and the investment that the county is making has outcomes that can be qualitatively measured and assessed as you go through this process. So, implementing the plan and the transition is literally a time-based process. And right now, the, if the phase implant happens, as I understand it, soon after my presentation, there is going to be a recruitment for a public defender. And a public defender will be appointed at some point by this board. And at that point, that public defender will start the process of creating the infrastructure, the office space, the technology support, the copying, for all the things that it takes to create a business, basically. And so, that person will be focusing on doing that. At some point during the summer/fall of 2023, there's going to have to be a recruitment and hiring of support staff. Oftentimes, I have found that if you start by hiring support staff, that is to say, the people who are going to be opening files, are going to be doing a lot of the work to support attorneys and investigators in carrying out their duties, oftentimes, they will have the office ready for, which is, for the next step, which is the recruitment and hiring of attorneys and investigator staff. And the, this process is going to take the chief public defender, working with the human resources department and other departments, to ensure that the classifications of the attorneys are set up, that recruitment is done in a discrimination-free and employment law-compliant process, so that people are trained right from the get-go, what it means to be a lawyer in a government office. How do you create a mindset that says, "This is what liability looks like? And if I don't conduct myself in a certain way, I could bring liability onto my office or to the board of supervisors in this county." So, it's making certain that the public defender is coaching, has the experience, or can gain the experience to have the kind of working relationship with human resources and county council, to ensure a workplace that is discrimination-free and can provide the services necessary.
Real quickly, she can't see you, so you're already one slide behind.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I forgot to tell you that I was going.
Show her a little bit while you're showing.
Yeah, I want, are you at?
That's it.
Are you at the? Yes, yes, we're at the same place. And so, at, in spring 2024, summer 2024, if everything, if the milestones have been met, the goal is to, at that point, have finalized the office space, the infrastructure, the hiring of staff and staff commitments. And one of the goals, I think, in the recruitment is to try to hire people who have a commitment or a desire to live in this county. This weekend, I had the pleasure of touring your county. I just started driving around. I said, "If I'm going to help this organization recruit people and encourage people to come, I need to know this county." So, I drove from one end to the other and literally just got a sense of it. I also went to cities that I were told were client clusters, that is, where cases come from, so that I could visibly see what these spaces and the, and the reality of the lives our clients live, before I made this presentation. And I'm glad I did, because I don't have to tell you that you live in a beautiful county. I mean, the beauty of everything that I saw, the vineyards, the flowers, the lake, everything, I think those are the kinds of things that have to be used to recruit people who want to come to places like this, but they don't know they exist. And so, the goal is to get people who have the kind of public defender commitment and community commitment to understand that they're coming to a place that's incredibly rich. I, I had the pleasure of going to a pianist concert at the Sopares Theater, and I thought that that was one of the nicest sort of artistic things that's available, and it was, it was an enjoyable process for me. And then, the transition, and this is where it's going to be things that are clearly often out of the control, out of me as a consultant, for sure. The transition that's going to go on, what does that look like? You know, I think that in talking to Carlos and talking to others, the goal is not to displace people, it's to get people who want to work in a public defender office with the commitments and the work schedules that those commitments call for, to determine how many people who are currently on LID want to be part of this new office. How do we transition them in? Are we going to transition their caseloads? Are we going to do other contractual obligations to ensure that the caseloads are well-managed during this transition? So, it's going to take a lot of conversation between the new public defender, the LID staff, and the, and the county staff as well. And then, hopefully, you know, it really will depend on when these milestones are met, the appointment of cases. And that's one of the reasons that we had talked to the court, because there's going to be a point in time where people are going to be appointed to cases. And the court, if, hopefully, can be given, you know, at least 90 days, notice that this appointment is going to happen on this day, whether it's the fiscal year, July 1, or some other date that's agreed upon based on the milestones met. But that date is going to be something that will hopefully set the tenor for the staff, the leadership of the, by the public defender and his executive, or her executive team, and see where it gets you from there. If we can go to the next slide. The issues to prepare to address, as always, I don't, you know, you are all, you know, community leaders, you know how these initiatives work, the devil is in the details. In the end, we can give a, a, a very positive and optimistic outlook as to how things go. The details on how they are addressed will be critical to the initial and sustainable success. I am a big proponent of the word "sustainable." So, the decision-making that is made at the initial steps are looked at years down the line. If I make this decision today, is this going to be something that is going to be sustainable three to five years? Not a quick fix, but what's it going to take to create sustainable decisions? And asking questions about sustainability to ensure that the staff, staffing, caseloads, and other things are sustainable during the process of transition. One of the things that I think is really important is the notion of keeping stakeholders informed. I think that if there's going to be an implementation process, that there has to be an implementation committee. I have served on several statewide implementation committees. I was on the Language Access Implementation Committee for the, for the State Supreme Court, and we had many meetings with stakeholders from throughout the state about how we were going to try to get language access initiatives into the differing courts around the state. But it really called for the creation of a team and a cohort of people focused on staying informed and seeing this implementation through. The other thing is creating the infrastructure schedule. One of the things I've learned from going through office retrofits, office remodels, and office restructuring, is that they have to stay on schedule. And that's a very, very hard thing. I will tell you that yesterday, I, Mr. Torres took me to see a space that's going to be available for the chief public defender and the initial staff hired here in this building that would really be an important physical location, so that there's an identity to this process and this program. And I think that that is a start to try to figure out how all this is going to go on throughout the years, throughout the year. And one of the things that I think is also really important is that there be discussions between the chief public defender, the human resources, and county council about keeping legal and employment law issues up to date. That is to say, having trainings initially to be able to, to ensure that all those things are up to date. For example, in California, they have a two-year training that has to be done by all supervisors in governmental offices that basically address discrimination, sexual harassment, and everything, and people have to sign off on that. And one of the things is making certain that this, that the public defender that's appointed is aware of those timetables and those things that have to be done. Because those are the kinds of things that get everybody in trouble if there is, God forbid, a lawsuit. You didn't keep up on these things? You didn't do this? You didn't evaluate? You didn't, you know, make an improvement plan? You didn't do all these things? That's what it takes to be a leader in a public office, ensuring that people are evaluated, that there's oversight, that there's improvement, and that there's support when needed, that the leader is, is there to ensure that an employee can produce work of excellence for their clients and, and give pride to this county for the kind of representation that that kind of excellence creates. That's why the fourth point, the orientation and training for staff transition, is really crucial. It's really crucial. And, you know, people will say, "Well, I'm a lawyer, I, I, just put me in a courtroom, I'm a lawyer." Well, that's not being a public defender. A public defender is an appointed employee by the board of supervisors that carries professional duties. And those professional duties have to be made right the get-go, and people are aware of it. Because in offices where I've seen lawsuits, and I've seen, you know, complaints to HR, things of that, is where employees were never trained as to the conduct that's expected of professional employees in a public defender office. But once the employee is trained and that is clear, you really find a, an office that's well-disciplined in that regard. And I, and I give you this from experience. In the 20 years that I worked for Marin County, there was never a lawsuit against our office for any of these things, for discrimination, for any of these things, because we were a zero-tolerance county in terms of some of these issues. And we trained our staff, and we trained our volunteers, and we trained everybody who came into our office, asked to these visions of zero tolerance toward discrimination, toward sexual harassment, toward any kind of thing that, that could potentially bring up liability for the county. And finally, the difficult part is avoiding implementation fatigue. One of the things about many initiatives that don't get completed is that people just get tired. They, it's just like, "I don't see anything moving, I don't see anything going, I don't see any activity." And people just literally get fatigued and are unable to, to see the matter to fruition. And that's why your initial leadership team in a public defender really has to be optimistic and supportive and encouraging, and literally be able to show people a vision that they may not yet see, because it's never been seen here. And so, I think that knowing those things are there, you can call on that, you can call, "Are we getting fatigued? Let's step back, let's talk to each other, let's, let's sit down and, and really get things worked out, so that we don't burn out even before we get started." Can we go to the next slide? So, basically, it's keep your eye on the prize. It's time. It's time, you know? And, and I think that the commitment that I've heard from county staff, and, you know, the, the discussion that's going back and forth from the, from the, from the board, and from constituents, and from people who are stakeholders, I think, you know, the goal is creating something that Lake County can be incredibly proud of, and look back on years later and say, "Man, I am so glad we made that decision. This really worked out." You know, I spoke to the LID attorneys, I spoke to private attorneys, and one of the things that, one of them, the attorneys told me is, "I have a daughter who's going to law school and hopes to come back to Lake County to practice here." Nothing is better, and I've seen it in my lifetime, is when interns that we start in a public defender office, in high school, follow through in college, follow through in law school, and then seek to come back. The public defender of Marin County right now is an intern that started with me as a first-year intern at USF, and we created the pipeline for him to be able to come back. In the same way, the goal is to create a pipeline that encourages people that were raised here to come back and make their home an even better place to live. So, that's my presentation. I'm open for questions, if you'd like.
Thank you. So, this transition is about a year?
I'm thinking, yes. To get it right, you know, about a year, yeah.
Okay. And so, I just had a question for CIO Parker about the transition with LID and their contract?
Yes, the, we are actually, where is he? There he is. We've been going back and forth on the terms of the length and expense of that, and some additional language. And Carlos and I are meeting tomorrow to finalize and send it to them, hopefully, to bring it back before the board on the 6th. And I wish to speak to the transition. The transition timeline will really be determined by the chief public defender. It could be longer, just, you know, there's a lot of moving parts to this, so I just want to make the community aware, it may be more than a year before we're fully transitioned. Because this person is appointed by the board, a budget unit is currently under administration, there isn't a department developed yet, there isn't a division developed yet. So, again, there is a, there's a lot of administrative items that haven't been listed that also need to take place.
Okay.
So, I just want to caution everyone, it may be more than a year.
Okay. Anything from the board?
Well, the other part is funding, and of course, we haven't addressed that, and will, I'm sure, multiple times during budget. But suffice to say, we haven't identified even a potential pool or pools of money. I mean, money may be the biggest thing that affects our timeline.
That is correct, sir.
We can open it up for the public, public input, and if there's anyone in the chambers that would like to come up, you can state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Most of you know me, Ms. Hassan. I'm Angela Carter. I've been an attorney in Lake County for 30 years. That's my daughter in law school who wants to come back and be a DA. I don't know where I went wrong, but I'm very proud of that fact. She's a Middletown girl, born and raised. I have to tell you, initially, when you hired a consultant from out of the area, the Lake County, I mean, wait, what, why do we need someone from Marin to come tell us what to do? But this man is charming and intelligent and has great ideas, and he's won me over 100%. So, I just would encourage you to listen when he speaks and follow his advice, and to really take time doing this, to not be rushed. My concern here, from the first day I got my first lawyer job in this county, it was for legal aid. We had legal aid back then, and it was a volunteer position, and is and always has been for the underserved and underrepresented in this county, and we have them, and they're in need, and they can be helped. And I know your consultant has that vision and has that in his heart. So, I just wanted to share my change of opinion. He's smiling, isn't he? And to thank him, and to thank the board for taking action in this area. This is something that's been needed for a very long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just go up here. Go ahead.
Come on, Joe.
I am John Moss. I am a journalist. I ask uncomfortable questions. I want to ask this gentleman if he visited the prisoners, if he visited the jail. I'm not done yet, asking questions. I remember a Spurgeon of Akiun who held hearings with the prisoners who had written complaints that reached the state. He had lunch with the inmates of the Lake County Jail. I had the privilege of watching the courts Tuesday morning. I think they've really improved. I respect the public defenders and the job they do, and I want to know what kind of contact this gentleman has had with the inmates served. Thank you.
One of the difficult parts is trying to get everything done in one week. But one of the things that I do hope to do is be able to visit the jail in subsequent visits, and be able to gather fact-finding from that. But I have watched the court.
But I have watched the court proceedings, I have seen the people that are incarcerated who have come in for arraignments or for other court proceedings, and I, and I've seen that, but I have not visited. I don't represent anyone in this county. So if I do go to the jails, it's mostly to be able to, uh, uh, see the infrastructure, see what the visiting rooms look like, things of that nature. But if, if I can get one of the attorneys from LID or from, or a private attorney who's willing to take me in for a visit, I can visit them. But I'm not certain how I can create something that allows me to, to, to focus on that because that's not the charge that I was hired to do. Consultants who come in to, to do detention work, that's a very different type of thing. I appreciate what the, the, the woman that who spoke said, because I think it's absolutely essential for the public defender to be aware of detention issues and to be able to, to highlight those kinds of things. Because conditions of confinement oftentimes are just a springboard to continued criminality. So I appreciate the comment. And in subsequent visits, I hope to be able to, to, to make those visits and, and carry out some of the, the observations that I think she wishes me to carry out.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the chambers?
Thomas Quinn, LID felony attorney. I also had the privilege of meeting with Mr. Varela, and I think he's doing an excellent job here. I think his ideas, I've been working here since 2003, and I think this is a further step on our arc of progress that we've had in, in developing and improving our public defender system. So I strongly urge the board to support this plan and get behind it. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Hello, Tom Feimer, co-administrator of Lake Inigeant Defense or LID with Andrea Sullivan. Again, I, I just want to echo how, what a pleasure it's been to have Mr. Varela here, speaking with us, seeing how things work. I mean, I think anybody's concern when we're told there's a consultant coming is, is this person really going to understand what we do and go through? And he's really taken the time to do that, and I just want to say, I really appreciate that. One thing Mr. Varela mentioned, he said, we need attorneys who understand the importance of client, of making clients whole. I think, Mr. Varela understands, we have those now. It's really a question of giving them the tools and the ability and the support to do that work of making them whole. I sort of, Mr. Varela's role is sort of in that of the, the vision. As administrator, I'm a little more, perhaps, less poetic and more, more talk in terms of prose. I do think there needs to be a recognition, what we're talking about is a significant buy-in and expansion of, of sort of the duties of what are provided. And it's going to mean a significant financial commitment from the county. It would be a tragedy to sort of undertake this process without really understanding that and, and really having that commitment. Because I agree, this is something, the things that were discussed are really going to improve this county. But, you know, you're going to have to make the buy-in to do that. My only concern, if I had one, of a caveat with the plan, and again, I understand this is not a, a comprehensive plan. It does rely a lot about appointing a chief public defender and having that person determine a lot of things that happen in this transition. I would very much like to see a sort of build-in to make sure that both LID, as it stands now in this period, and our attorneys and the other stakeholders have a, sort of a continuing voice and a continuing role in that process. I think that'll go much smoother for all concerned if, rather, we have somebody who just sort of comes and, you know, makes pronouncements on high and we all rush to sort of adapt to it. And again, to echo what Ms. Moss said, and if Mr. Varela wants to contact me about going on a jail visit or a, a, visiting in custody client, we would absolutely be happy to see if we could arrange to make that happen. Thank you.
I'll take you up on that.
Anyone else in the chambers? And I don't see any in the Zoom room, so we'll close public input and bring it back. And this is a presentation, so we don't have an action item, but I'm just wondering if there are any final comments.
No, I think we heard it echoed here today, you know, it's just going to be that financial commitment that we need to be prepared for when we're making this discussion in this transition. So I'm pleased to hear the public comments. At least we're starting off in the right direction, it seems like. So, yeah, positive day. Excellent.
All right.
I did want to add one thing, and that is, I'm committed to working with county staff, the CAO's office, and anyone else, to actually work with legislators from this jurisdiction, Mark McGuire, and I, the assembly member's name escapes me, to, this is equally the state's responsibility. This isn't just Lake County. The Fresno lawsuit showed that the, when the ACLU lawsuit happened in Fresno County, that the state was remiss in supporting, you know, jurisdictions that didn't have the capacity to provide those services. So I think that, that I'm hoping that this board will be part of a legislative sort of presentation to your legislators to say, we need assistance. If we're going to do this, we need a, a five-year commit, a three-year commit, whatever it is, to be able to create the sustainable financial support to allow this to really happen. You know, Mr. Feimer, Mr. Quinn, and others, this is, what we're talking about is a big commitment. And it doesn't just fall on Lake County. It falls on the state of California as well. And I'm committed, as part of my contract, to do whatever I can, to use the people that I know and the lobbying that I've done in Sacramento in the past, to assist this county in getting that kind of funding.
That's, that's great to hear. Supervisor Green.
Thank you for bringing that up. You are absolutely right. How we landed in this is a more complicated story than anyone cares to hear. But the reason you're here today is because we got a report saying we were not meeting, basically, our due process, because we're not representing our Inigeant clients adequately. And it's like, okay, is that all on Lake County? Or, you know, does the state have a role in preserving the rights of its citizens? I would think so. And their failure to provide adequate funding certainly is a contributor. And so since the big question mark on this item, just like it was with an earlier item, we can adopt whatever plan we want and make it all fancy and put it on nice letterhead. But if we can't afford to pay for it, it's going to be tough. But what I wanted to highlight was I did appreciate the little introduction to the notion of holistic defense, holistic representation, if only because it does dovetail nicely with one thing the state is, again, trying to foist on us, another specialty court, Care Court. And while I have concerns about how that's going to roll out locally, just based on the complexity of that and knowing our current resources, I am, I'm at least modestly encouraged to hear about concepts like holistic defense because that, that will certainly be supportive of Care Court and all other, other specialty courts. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that's kind of a model that's emerging, and I'm glad to hear that's actually being practiced to some extent under our current model. So I look forward to hearing more about that, just like I look forward to hearing more about avenues of money that we need to pay for this. So thank, thank you so much for your presentation, and I very much appreciate the people who spoke. There was some skepticism coming in, and it's not all roses now, but, you know, if you've changed some hearts and minds in your short time with us, then I, I think that speaks volumes about you and your talent and your vision.
And I will tell you, they changed my heart. The conversation I had with, with every one of the people that spoke, literally, you know, I think this is a very nice symbiotic relationship that's creating. You know, as they said at the end of Casablanca, I think this is the start of a beautiful friendship.
All right. So I just wanted to ask, I know there was an email given to us yesterday, and don't want to ask the direct question per se, but what I, I know that with what was said about six different attorneys to avoid conflicts, is that the type of things you'll be working on in the future?
I think that's going to be part of the transition plan. Because once you create a statutory public defender, as, as I think some of the LID attorneys will tell you, they represent the great majority, I mean, great majority, 98%, I've heard the number, of individuals that are, that are coming before the court. Many of those will now be represented by the public defender. And depending on how the conflict system works, they will retain quite a few of those cases. And it'll be interesting to see how that conflict number comes up and, because you will still have to retain a conflict panel of some sort in order to be able to, to take the cases that are conflict. And that's one of the, the unknowns. Right now, we have asked the court for data on all the open cases that they have right now so that we can track, you know, conflicts and we can see how that, and I'm sure we will talk to LID about what, what that process is going to look like. But some of those numbers are, are only going to happen as the rubber meets the road sort of thing, once we start seeing them.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming. Thank you for coming in person, thank you for spending your time here in the county and meeting with everybody. This has been really valuable, and we look forward to our next conversation.
Sounds good. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.